Board Designing Appeals and Planning Commission, June 25th, 2024.
I call this meeting of the Jefferson County Border Zoning Appeals to order. If you would, we'd open prayer. Dear and Father, we come to you thanking you for another wonderful day here in Jefferson County, for the beautiful weather, dear God, and just the health and ability you've give each and every one of us to get up and go about living our day. And Lord, I pray that you're pleased with how we went about doing so. As we come together tonight to discuss the business of the zoning in Jefferson County and the planning commission, dear God, I just, I pray that you would, you would watch over our minds and our mouths, Lord, and just help everything that we say and do be glorifying unto you. Just bless the county, Lord, as you can, and we'll give you all the praise and honor for it, Lord. We thank you for allowing us to serve, and we give thanks to you and ask these things in Christ's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Jacob, if you'd like to pray.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I take it that you received your packets and had a chance to take a look at the minutes? There's no corrections to those looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Bean, now, are all those in favor? If you're in the mentions, is that being printed? Let me know by saying aye. All those opposed? We have some citizens' input tonight, one, I think. Okay, Mr. Jim Fox. Jim here with us now. If you would, Jim, let's step to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Jim Fox, 1909 Adley Trail, Dan. I've got these guys for you guys.
Jim, you can speak whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, I was just trying to be conservative.
I appreciate that very much. I think we've all had a chance to look at the picture.
All right, so this is a continuation from the last meeting. Mr. Thornton is seeking a variance, so he can add a roof to his front porch, put a front porch over his driveway, and a long time probably extend the sidewalk from the porch to the driveway and cover it as well. The carport will be run at the truck is in the center picture. Mr. Thornton had a survey completed. I'm willing to leave it to show that the front corner pen for his house will be under the storage building in picture one. The northern front pen for his house will be under his mobile home. In this instance, so this would make his entire project across his property line. So in this instance, the owner does not own to the center of the road. Clearly, the map clearly shows that in picture three, that there's a 50-foot wide path for the road, and all of that has been surveyed out. Even though the asphalt is currently less than 11 feet wide, and I want to emphasize less than 11 feet because he wants them built within inches of that asphalt, so the road path would be 11, would be less than 11 feet, meaning if you veer it off any at all, you're going to hit something, or backing a trailer up or down would be virtually impossible. A 12-foot trailer would be impossible. Putting in a mobile home at 16-foot wide would be absolutely impossible. The single, it's already impassable for two cars. It's already difficult for anyone to get a trailer up and down. The county does not extend ditch to ditch, as the zoning enforcement officer said last time, and that's picture number three. Mr. Thornton's proposed project will be entirely on county property, extending to within a couple of feet of the asphalt. To approve this would lead to several questions. Are we giving Mr. Thornton the county road frontage and issuing him a deed? If so, what about everyone else? This is also valuable real estate, as we've always finished with the recent tax assessments. I don't believe the county can give away anything for that. If he is allowed to build, who owns the property? Mr. Thornton or the county? Who would be responsible for upkeep and maintenance? Who would be liable to deserve an accident? I would think his own owners, as soon as they realize that this is not on his property, they will say it's not their problem, and so the county will become liable. To allow this to happen is a set of this dangerous precedent in that anyone would be allowed to build on any county property anywhere, including the four house steps. Now, don't get me wrong, and Robert will say that his first, when his first mobile home burned, he lost it to a fire, he was told he had to rebuild what he had. That was over 15 years ago. I'm sure his permits is long since expired. Now, he also has an interest on property next door to him that, that he, I think he maybe should consider building there. He would need a variance for the entire 30-foot second act, plus 15 feet of county road that he proposes, a total of 45 feet. But don't get me wrong, I am not opposed to Robert building all the way up to his property line. My issue is building beyond the property line, and so I'm asking. Before I begin the night, now, I've got a couple of things that I'm printing straight off the zoning commission website. I'll, one says, your property is on number one, setbacks are 30 feet from the front property line, 12 feet off the rear end sidelines, not the center of the road. Here's another one, and this would affect me. All lots must have at least 50-foot of county road frontage attached as the property. Since this is a dead-end street, and I live on a dead-end street, if we condemn, we allow Robert to do this and give the property to him, my 50-foot road frontage certainly becomes less than 11 feet. So that would put me in violation as well. So that's what I have, so I'm asking you to not, I have no issue with him building up to his property line, but not me out. And you're welcome to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. That's, I have received another citizen's input, land use plan, that's going to be the plan of the year. That's all the citizens' input for the border zoning appeals. You all received your packets of papers laying at your chairs tonight. See the letter that come to you from over at Land Trail? I think that you had a chance to look over here. I gather that. Okay. Moving on down the agenda, item number six, front setback branch for a covered porch on an existing mobile home located at 1910 Adley Trail. Is Mr. Thornton here tonight? If you would, step to the podium and...
By the way, that property's A1, not R1.
It is A1, okay.
Robert Thornton, 1910 Adley Trail.
I think you were, spoke to this last month, and it got postponed. We were waiting on an accurate variance amount from the surveyor.
Yeah, you got the survey there in your package.
Yes.
Eddie Gary. Now, I don't know where Eddie, I mean, I ain't questioning Eddie's thing, but in Charlie Tipton's road book, he does not have a right-of-way on that. It's ditch. So I don't know how Eddie come up with that 50-foot, and I didn't call Charlie and ask, but anytime it's in the county road book and there's no right-of-way, he's always told me ditch, ditch. So that's what, we give a few variances on that road over here, and that's what we went by.
Everything previous is went ditch to ditch on that road, is what you're saying?
Yes, that's what we went by.
What we went by.
Now, Eddie may be going with what, you know, if you do a new road now, you got to have 50-foot, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Thornton, Mr. Thornton, would you like to speak to this, sir? Would you like to speak to what's going on here?
I do.
I said, would you like to speak to what you're, just walk us through it again, if you would, please?
As far as, all I'm going to do is put one of those aluminum carports, cover up my cars. It's not going to stick out past any other building that I have on there. And as far as the future walkway, I would have to come in and buy for permits and get done with that. All I'm wanting is aluminum carport and a porch roof over the porch I had at the original house that burned.
Okay, and the aluminum carport you want to put in, it doesn't come to the front edge of the concrete, does it not? It doesn't come, except by...
It'll be about, the way the road comes in, when the asphalt, that they came down and went like this, where I had a gravel driveway, so they've concreted up to the platform. So it's not going to be on pictures, I think he said number two or one, the ground building. It's not, the cover is not going to cover that. That truck will go back about three more feet. And as far as the wideness of it, he's got a fence all the way up, a foot off the side of the road, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Thornton? Bean, now, I'm watching pleasure of the board.
So how far out is this coming out here?
I don't know.
So this is on the front of the trailer, that you're putting the cover over. Does it come clear out to the road?
I don't know which picture you're talking about, but it might not. Which one?
This one.
No, that is the wood I purchased to put the roof on. That's wood, that's covered up. This building down here?
Yeah.
Is right here, this one right here. See, I can move the truck back, the cover will go right about there. So there's about four feet from that. That is a pile of lumber that I've got covered up.
Okay, so this is about four feet. It will come to about four feet of the road?
No, 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 back this way.
Yeah, back that way.
Yeah, yeah, that way. So there'll be at least four feet on the road.
Do you understand, Peter?
The number of feet you... Kind of limited on the back because of the 1002 and the 1007.
10 feet?
So the first box that came, we received from the zoning board, that's where they told me to put the house.
And on the survey, I don't know if you...
I don't, I don't see any survey.
Well, the cover you're wanting to build comes out this way, right?
Yes, man, the porch right now is 10 by 10, so it's probably 10, 11 feet out. It's not going to be but a foot out of the porch. That is lumber to be put up.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried how, how far this cover is going to come out close to that road.
That's probably going to be about, I don't know, five feet back. It's a pretty good walkway.
Mr. Thornton, what was the footage of the variance you were asking for? That was what was supposed to be given by the surveyor, and he's not included that on this space paper.
Well, the way the 1002 and the 1007, I didn't have, you know, that's where they told me to put it.
See, that's what he's showing, right? So he's asking for a variance of 7.62 feet?
Yeah, he had some numbers written down there, and he, he knew what I wanted.
Yeah, that's on the pad, and I guess he... He doesn't say.
No.
Now, he's already got the posts, you can see some of those pictures before.
Yeah.
The posts are already there, he just wants to put a roof on to that.
Those are going to come down. Yes, ma'am, they're going to come down. I got the big ones under the tarp, so it's only going to come out like a foot out.
That's on the sheath, I'm scared. You weren't asking for the variance on me.
From where, from where these problems are?
Yes, ma'am.
From the house.
Yeah, okay.
5.63?
And that's the length of the four, plus about two feet.
Listen, I hate to put variance. If you go back and look at this picture, these two don't line up. The roads obviously are left together, it's a little mountain. So, for the information we have here, you're asking for a 7.62-foot variance.
Well, if I got to be 30-foot off the line, but I mean, I'm going down to the 1002 by then, the lot wouldn't have been built unless they brought in a bunch of dirt.
Jim, you, you've been out there and looked at this thing?
Yeah, I've been there many times, yeah. It's, everybody down there is outlined over there.
Absolutely.
We've given variances on that road over the years, and we give Mr. Fox one, like he ran along with him, or his garage.
Across the county line, not across the property.
Sir, sir, you've had your time of podium.
Thank you.
Watch pleasure of the board, if there's no more questions for Mr. Thornton.
I'll sit down.
Wait, wait.
He's just coming out a little past these poles right here, then he's still got about four feet here before you get to the road.
Yeah, it's not for close. It's not for close.
Yes, it is.
Guys, I'm looking for a motion, if you have no more questions.
I'll make a motion, we do not grant variances.
We have a proper motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have proper motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of denying the variance, let me know by saying aye. All those opposed, aye. Motion passes. Sorry, Mr. Thornton. Okay, moving on down the agenda, we're at item number seven, variance for a garage to be placed in front of the house at 670 Heather Brook Circle, Jefferson City, Tennessee, Cherokee Estates, Lot 11, by Kenna and Wendy Miller. Miller's here?
You have pictures out there in the back of the...
Yes, sir. Tim, what, what about this?
She has no other place to put it. She puts it in front of her house, it's a picture to show, and she may have more to add to that.
Yeah, I just, I didn't have to go over, I have some share that's...
You share that topic, yeah. You can see on that one of the aerial.
What's that?
And there is nowhere else she has to build. She builds in.
Have we granted variances in that before, Tim?
I'm sure we have.
Four of mine, other road down the street, they have one next to theirs.
We do, yeah, we have, okay. It's common on the lakes, right?
Do we have any questions for Miss Miller, guys? Want you, second?
So it's a topography issue?
He asked if it was a topography issue, that's the only...
Yeah, in the rear of the house, there's a slope down to the lake, and so you can't put anything back there, along with the septic and drainage filters in the rear of the house. So it's really...
It's the only place there is.
It doesn't meet all the requirements for setbacks. It's well off the road, it's off the neighbor's property, so there's no issues there. It's just the location.
Yeah, typical lake lake.
Do we have any other questions for Miss Miller? Bean, now, I'm watching pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion, we grant the variance.
We have a proper motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion being second, is there any further discussion? Bean, now, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. All those opposed, aye. As the last item on the agenda for the border zoning appeals, any kind of motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, my turn.
About the motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. All those opposed, motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Now, I'd like to call to order the, this meeting of the Jefferson County Planning Commission, and, yeah, trust you received your packets, had a chance to overlook the minutes. Is there any corrections to those? Bean, now, I'm looking for a motion to pass, approve?
Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to abstain from this, as I was not at the last minute.
Appreciate that, sir.
Same with me.
Appreciate that. Bean, now, abstaining, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the main meeting of the planning commission. Have a proper motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Main meeting second, any discussion? All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, we have some citizens' input for the planning commission. Kyle is the first name. Bertzell is, okay, if you would, step to the podium, state your name and address, sir.
Is this citizen's input, or is he speaking to the...
It's citizen's input, what he said.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Kyle Bertzell, I live at 1662 Howard 2570. They put a campground at 1673, which is about three doors down from me, and we see on the notes that he said there wasn't any residents that were 10-5, so we didn't have to adhere to buffer zones and the buffer issues. And we have pictures that we live at probably 800 feet from his house and less than 1,000 from this campground. Our backyard is the lake, and he has zero buffer between his campground and our property and our backyard, and we want something to do about that. I've got kids, we see a gentleman exposing himself to urinate and all kinds of stuff, and he's using the buffer off another neighbor's property, which is not even his, so we would like to do something about that. But, yeah, so, you know, I don't know if he has to adhere to the campground rules that we received, but there's at least four of them that he's not followed up on. You guys approved this on November 28th of 2023, and he's just going as he willy-nilly as he may, so.
If you've been backing up there, saying, not saying it is?
That you've approved. It's been six, seven months now, so, you know, I'd be much appreciated if something could be done. You know, I've been there for 10-plus years, and the guys have been there for not even two, and his people just roam onto our property and leave their trash and play on our dock, and it's becoming a real unsanitary for my family and kids down there. I would really appreciate if something could be done.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, Brian Asbury, Mr. Asbury, there you go. If you would, please step to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name is Brian Asbury, I live at 1122 West Dumplin Valley Road, Dantridge, Tennessee, 37735. I wanted to talk about the discussion of the land use plan as possible re-some. Keep showing up on the agenda, kind of in, I'm kidding. When I was an employee of Engineering Services Group, we had five-day management meetings every Monday morning, and we'd go over the job list, and we'd put dates on it. And if you don't put, if you didn't put dates on anything, it didn't get worked on. So this stays on here like this and has no date, you know, that was scheduled, like to kind of move this thing forward, so I'd like to find out how we could start working on this and kicking the can forward a little more than we have been, or maybe not kick the can, so to speak, and start working on it and making some progress. So I'd like some, some to review all this, say how, how we can get moving on this. I'll be glad to help you myself. Thank you. That's my speech.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Have a... Ms. Julie Strang?
Sorry, I have to work down there. I'm the neighbor of Kyle Bertzell, and I'm in the middle of these two properties from Kyle and 1673, where the campground is. And when the gentleman first bought the property, he had no driveway, and so he has to use our driveway. He never said he was putting the campground in or anything, just said, sure, you could use it, and concrete trucks, and his kids and everybody, and next thing we know, we got a car. All gone. Anyway, he was using our driveway, he ruined it, and I just paid $400. This is, this is there now. This is, this is there now, this is a, um, I guess it's a shower house. Um, this is a lot that we had to put up because after he put in his driveway, well, in the interim, uh, from where he was, they, everybody was using that as a passway to get to our driveway, to get out, to get to the street. So we had to put a lot there to stop that from happening because, you know, we said it was okay for him to use it, but we didn't know it was going to be a campground, and now we have... It's, he's calling it a Christian campground too, and I love Christian, that's because I asked him if he could fix the driveway with all the potholes from the concrete trucks and everything, and he said he didn't have any extra. We, I, we've had the property for about four years now, quiet, you know, not expected, there's no barriers there, and like Mr. Bertzell said, that, that he put down there, that there was nothing there but, um, forest trees or something. We're down there, you know, we use it for camping, we use it for fishing, and, um, there was a dog on our property, and a little boy who could get hurt, not just that, I mean, it's a campground. These people coming over here could get hurt on our property, or Mr. Bertzell, you know, and, um, this, he never told us any of this, and I don't know what he said, said on the... To the zoning board, but, um, you know, ever since he's come, I don't have fingers going, but have things stolen, um, and again, you know, we have dogs. I think, um, I thought it's not too nice, older nude people swimming in the water, which I don't care, you know, I'm old too, but I get to do that too if he's got campers down there. Um, there's, there's no privacy down there, I mean, as far as what he said, and I think that there's supposed to be some kind of barrier or something. And apparently he has flags or something up or closer to the main road where his house is, I have the plan here, and, um, there's nothing there, absolutely nothing there. Except my driveway and his driveway and little flags that look like they're gonna be camp sites, I don't know. He sold his, this house up at the top of the road too to somebody that, um, well, he overpriced it at first, I don't know if that's what he meant, but he overpriced it and he made a low rate. Um, didn't tell him he was gonna put a campground in his backyard either, and there's no barrier back there yet, so, um, anyway. Yeah, we would like our piece of quiet back, that's all we're asking.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next on the citizen's input, Mr. Jim Fox. Jim, still here.
Good evening again. Yeah, my name is Jim Fox, nineteen oh nine, Heatherling Trail. First off, I'd like to say, love him and thank him, all of her, uh, kind of part of this commission, her thoughts and insights were very valuable. And in fact, I'd really be interested to hear what she, how much she has to say after what I want to speak about. Last time I was here, I was here to raise awareness about the short-term rentals, uh, and then, you know, that there's approximately not fifteen hundred discount. Uh, up to ninety percent denied our business licenses, and one hundred percent not expected. Um, and she spoke about, uh, video stores in the eighties and nineties, since they were a new industry and growing bodies, governing bodies didn't know what to do with it, so they had to come up with new plans and new ways and new zoning and, and rules for the video games. Video, obviously that's come and went, and let's move to twenty twenty-four, short-term rentals didn't, didn't exist when the codes were developed. Now we're trying to make the codes fit the industry, whether they're making new codes or making, get the industry fit the codes. And one of that will being, all of, uh, there was something said that maybe A-one and R-one was acceptable, but my contention is, these are essentially small motels and small hotels. They should be treated the same way and under the same guidance and rules and principles. Motels in this area are zone C-eight. The commission should be proactive in developing codes for the industry, and this document stated by not, by doing nothing exposes the county to law bill. They should, they should have their own zoning designation, that again, as I said, C-eight, C-eight, possible signing at the lodge, showing contact name and number of head of department. Fire inspections twice a year, initial electrical inspection, deck inspections twice a year, fire extinguishers, fire escape plants, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, safe campfire procedures. Uh, you know, I looked at an Airbnb site and looked at several of the listings, and each one of them says, the owner doesn't list a smoke detector or smoke, uh, or a fire extinguisher. You may want to plan on packing one, and I don't know about you guys, that's the first thing on my list when I packed it on vacation. Second, next, pools and hot tubs for public use must be maintained by a certified pool operator and inspected by the health department. This is state law, there's twenty-five pages of, from the state department of health, and given the Jefferson County Health Department authority and responsibility for inspecting. They're supposed to be inspected monthly. Uh, lastly, our, our, thank our, Airbnb's ADA compliant, there's also an ADA compliant responsibilities under pools and spas. And, you know, if someone doesn't have a business license, this could be considered tax evasion or fraud. The county clerk says rental companies such as Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera, will not cooperate with them in identifying these locations in our county. What are they hiding and why? Does that become conspiracy or obstruction if they refuse cooperating? If they don't want to cooperate with our county, and plus, all these pools and spas are supposed to be inspected by the health department, they're putting their guests at serious health risks. Putting their life and safety on the line because they will not cooperate. If they don't cooperate with our county officials, why should we even allow them to count? And again, I think they should be followed under same script, I mean, the original short-term rental is a hotel, that's the original short-term rental, why, why should we trick them? That's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
You want us to copy this?
You're more than happy to leave one at the office, if you'd like, Tim, Stephanie, I don't want you, you can get as copies of that.
I highlighted the commission, and I highlighted type B pools, which is what they would call them.
Keep my ear around and give it to them over there, it'll be fine, please. Moving on down the agenda, new business. Item A, preliminary plot approval for seven lots on Highway twenty-five seventy, East Old Newport Highway, Dandridge, by Beachwood Homes LLC. Anyone here to represent them?
Yeah, if you have a copy of that.
He's got it.
Here it is for y'all, if you'd like to see it. Christian Matters with TWM out of Athens, Tennessee.
What we have is, we have, oh, sorry, mic, mic check. Uh, we have, uh, we have a several lots of invasion on Newport Highway and Highway twenty-five, uh, twenty-five seventy east, where we're asking for preliminary plat approval on this. We've submitted this, and, uh, I think there was two comments that we didn't have, we need to address tonight, but we are asking for preliminary plat approval on this, this plat. I think one of those would be labeled with probably twenty-five with fifty foot right away, and the other comment was, um...
Um, fifty foot setback from a state highway, uh, which Highway, uh, twenty-five seventy is, and then, so there's a fifty foot setback there, and then, uh, I made a recommendation that the driveway access for all the lots be obtained from the old Newport Highway, so you don't have curb cuts on state highway. They would have to get highway permits anyway, which is difficult to do.
That's what I'm about to say. If they decide to go to Highway twenty-five, the, the state, the...
They're not gonna let them.
They're just gonna control that anyway.
Yeah.
And you'll notice that he's averaging those lots, and we went over it a couple of times, and they're averaging over forty thousand, so. Some of them are less than forty, if you'll see on there, but the whole thing averages over, a little over forty thousand. I see you got the calculator right there, we, we did it a couple of times. It averages forty-one seven.
We try to make it pretty consistently width, because it, because it does narrow pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty drastically as it comes down through there.
Are the utilities on the bigger map?
Yes, there's, we're on, on Highway twenty-five seventy. We have, we have a sort of half the purchase done on property now, ready, we'll be set in the, the public board.
But he don't have to, I mean, they're doing so well in that language.
Do we?
I've got it. Mark.
Marked, bro.
It's not got our mark on it.
The homeside.
It's not got it on here.
Each lot showing its own place.
Yeah, I know, do you have to have it on preliminary? I can't remember. The house side. House side, I don't, now, if we have to have it on preliminary, no, I think you have to have it on the final.
For the seal?
The house side that we, you have to have a house side on for the final.
Right.
Show that the house can go on each lot. But I would assume you don't wanna do that to Tom Carter.
Yeah, we don't want, all we do right now is concept, preliminary concept on this, this is what we're asking for.
Right, I, and it, and I told him, the officer, the property's a little wet, some, some of it, so, but.
We need, we need a very accurate, exactly where they're going to set the gap before we, before we place the house.
But it will be on there, John, there for the final.
No, that's no problem. I think they're looking at the thirty-two by eights is what their standard.
What is ours, I, I...
Ours is seven percent.
Yeah.
Of the lot size.
Right.
Doesn't matter what, what size you get, it's gotta be seven percent, less than ten percent slope, which this is flat up there anyway, but.
Yeah, it is, yeah, and it, I mean, it doesn't matter, they're, they're gonna put all the homes in, but that, that doesn't matter, it's still gotta show the sign.
They've got to have a buildable size, seven percent equal to seven percent or greater of the lot.
Seven percent or greater, is there a maximum amount, curving?
You can be, you can cover the whole lot as long as you hit the sit base.
Yeah, that's no problem.
But it's gotta be a minimum house site guaranteed by the surveyor.
Yeah.
Seven percent of the lot size.
That, that would more than cover thirty-two by eight, build up wide, more than that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question for our planner.
Okay.
Do you have any other concerns other than what you've noted here?
No, not at this time, it's a preliminary plat, so as long as the, uh, these are addressed on the final.
Okay.
Do we have any further questions? Being now on the pleasure of the board. So. We have a proper motion to approve preliminary plat.
Second.
Seven lots. We have a second, do we have any more discussion?
I do have a discussion with you, caveat of no driveways off of, I just need to make sure that's in there or not, is what, no driveways off of Highway twenty-five. For the recommendations that she makes, that, that's a recommendation, if, if that is or not, or which one actually is.
If you like them in your motion.
Yes, all her recommendations are included.
Okay, that's just, just to make sure.
Okay. Saying, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving, let me know on the same eye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thanks, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Next item is letter B, discussion of land use plan, possible rezoning of Jefferson County. Time for meeting. I'll open it up to the board for discussion.
We got the maps here, Kyle, need to see them, or, uh, we have a showing on... We got the map.
Did you all hear what Tim said, we do have the maps here, we had the inability to put them on the screen tonight, and we were questioned pretty heavily about having them out and not having them up there the last time we did that, so. I'll leave them to the pleasure of the board for what they want to do.
Can we have, can we put them up?
We can't.
No, not tonight.
Not tonight, we can't, next, next meeting should be.
The next meeting you could schedule and be able to put them up.
Unless he's not here, or I think, yeah.
Oh, I see.
You want me to take a crack at it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you go right ahead.
I wouldn't do well.
Running the stuff? No, no, I thought you wouldn't take a, a crack at addressing that issue, uh, we can get it up on the screen next time. If he's here.
No, he, uh, he just had a conflict, not a meeting.
Right.
His first meeting he missed, and I don't remember.
Now, if you all wanna get him out and look at him, we can get him out and look at him, I just, you know, we're scrutinizing that last time.
Has our planner had a chance to go over them yet?
No.
No, she has not.
That would probably be a good thing, she had a chance to look at them so she can offer us some guidance when we start down that road.
Um, and I'm, I have some questions. Um, is it the land use plan that, uh, causes the greatest concern, or the, um, or the zoning ordinance that is difficult to minister and vague? What, what is your priority for, um, developing a planning program that works better for the county?
From the standpoint of the plan, we've got several problems, one is, we've got some issues that were put in, and some background on our zoning. It was put in to stop trailer parks in nineteen...
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. It's put in to stop trailer parks, and so that's the premise that it started with, and, and most of the property was put in there on whatever use it happened to be at that point in time. Uh, and a majority of it was A-one, because of a lot of farms at that time. And as it's come forth, um, there's been a lot of changes, a lot of people move in. So we've got to figure out on what we're planning to do, how to balance, because we're getting overloaded with houses. And houses don't pay the bills. Uh, without the balance of commercial and industrial, and, and the other thing, we can't support this thing. It'll be untenable for property owners in this county if we don't. And so we need to, one of the big complaints that, at least that I've heard, is that some of the people moved in and said, well, I didn't know that was possible here next to me. So one of the things we've talked about is doing some overlays on these corridors. We've got eleven E, twenty-five seventy, ninety-two, sixty-six, four eleven, those are major corridors.
State highways, yeah.
And there's, and, and there's only one end to a four-lane highway. When I was a kid, when you went down where Farragut is, it was all farms. Dixie Lee Junction, at Bear Joint, and some other things.
It's hard to recognize today.
But, you know, so four-lane highways, so when you take Highway eleven down through there, it's, it's commercial. And the end, the end thing is that it will be over time, we'll move towards that, and if we're, if we're serious with what we're doing to have a balance, then you won't. And if we're, if we're serious with what we're doing to have a balance, then you want commercial and business and industry, you want them close to where that infrastructure is, at least, in my mind.
Otherwise, well, otherwise they won't locate there in the first place.
Well, you've got power and water and logistics. So, if you're going down through New Market and it's twelve miles to the interstate that way and fifteen this way, if that's developing, you want them to stay along that corridor. You do not want them out back in New Market on Buckholl Road. So, we, we need to come up with a plan where we tell industries, commercial, ventures, whatever it is, here's where we'd like for you to be, what we'd like for you to look at first. Then everybody knows that it's not a, if you want to buy a property there, that's fine, do whatever you want to with it, live in it, farm it, whatever. But, but there's a possibility that somewhere down the road, these are where we'd like businesses and commercial entities, and, and we'd like for them to stay here, because this out here can be residential and farms and whatever. So, how do we do that?
Oh, there's a couple of different tools to do it. One is an overlay. One, you can proactively rezone property where you, where you want to, the planning commission can initiate a rezoning. Most people, most cities don't do that, they wait for someone to ask for rezoning, and then there's consideration. If you go through the exercise of developing a land use plan and determining concentration of particular land use types, go ahead and rezone it yourself. So that you can also look at extension of utilities, or utility districts can look at extension of utilities. So that's, that's one thing, is to take the, kind of the bull by the horns, and determine where you want those uses and then zone it appropriately. The other thing, I know that we had an individual here last month who wanted a commercial use of an agricultural piece of property. And there was opposition from neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, which is expected. So, it was a BZA consideration for the use. And I personally am not comfortable with those, they're in an additional set of criteria, and that would be, those are easy to do, is maybe amend your zoning ordinance to where, if you have commercial uses, that there are certain conditions. One of those conditions would be you have to be located on a state highway. Which is really easy, that's like two sentences that you could amend in your zoning ordinance for that purpose. It's quick and dirty. So there are, there are long-range tools, and then there are quick and dirty tools. I do not like, a lot of times if the BZA is making determinations of what goes in zone districts, aside from what's allowable. Consistency is everything in those considerations, and it's hard to maintain consistency with different people being present for the evening, different people who know one another, go to church. It's changing memberships of commission members who make those determinations. So, maintaining that consistency is really, really difficult. So if it's written in there that you want a commercial use, and you're in an A-one district, you've got to be on a state route. Or a, or a designation of our arterial that's connecting state route, state route, but those are typically called connectors or collectors. So, do you, you have a current major route plan that you utilize?
Not sure it's the land use in two thousand nine.
Let me ask another question while you're, while you're on this, and, and this is a. It's one of the, it's kind of an oxymoron, because doing the land use plan, if you lock into it, then how do you have allowances of? Let's go down to West Tennessee. Blue Oval City, above Brownsville down there, Ford come in. Midland over.
Yeah.
They've got, that little old town had three hundred and some people. It was a little, little town municipality, but, but all of a sudden, some, something comes in and, and it's going to be very beneficial to the county. How do we have that ability and the flexibility in our land use plan to take a look at those? And I'm not necessarily advocating for Ford to come in, I'm not much on having whales come in, they're hard to clean up when they die, and they smell. So I'd rather have the suppliers than I would. How do we, how do we have that flexibility and have that land use plan that says, this is where we're headed, and this is what we'd like to see five, ten, fifteen years down the road? As to the, what the mix is going to be, because we, we've got to get to a mix. We can't sustain where we're at in this county on the, on the housing growth.
No, I understand that, I mean, that brings jobs, that brings sales tax, it's any number of economic improvements. I think good planning is determining where your revenue is going to be generated, and you're right, residential always operates in red. You never operate the black with regard to low-density residential. Now, higher-density residential, we're, that's a different, that's a different animal. But to get higher density, you have to have sewer, you have to have water, you have to have capacity in both, not only there, but it has to have capacity to service the area. So, one of the first things you do in a land use plan is map your utilities, because there's no reason to go and zone something commercial if there's not water and there's not sewer.
And we've got, I mean, all the water districts, electric co-op, they're, they're great, they've got the maps, they know exactly where the, the big lines, what each substation will do. I mean, we can get, we've got all that help if we need it.
Yeah.
When we start, and, and we can request that, that's not a problem, because they've got the figures, they, they know exactly what extra capacity, substation, Oshkosh went into Jefferson City. They needed a grade there, they built a new substation there. So, so the electric co-op is great about that stuff, and great about planning on what they're doing for their loads and where things are going. Then you've got, Jefferson City head serves their municipality with water, as does Dandridge, but then you've got several large.
Private utility districts.
Well, utility districts, I don't know if they're private, but they're.
They're.
I mean, they're, yeah.
They're, they're considered quasi-governmental.
Yes, so you've got New Markets, you've got Shetty Grove, you've got Alpha Talbot.
And that's all public water.
With, and that's all public water, and so, they've got tremendous maps, and they've got, but all the trunk lines and all the, the heavy stuff exist on those state routes that we're talking about. Because eleven-E is north side of the county, twenty-five-seventy is south side of the county, ninety-two bisects it goes across. Sixty-six comes up here, four-eleven is south of the river. So all of that, the utilities, truck lines, they're big service lines, they're large utility lines, all of that kind of follows those things, and that's the way this thing has developed in the county over the years. Because it's the easy thing to do, is to follow that.
It's, it, it's the blank in the equation. You gotta have, you know, you gotta have water capacity, so where, who provides sewer in the county?
There is no sewer.
There is no sewer in the county, okay.
The only sewer is within the municipalities, and there, there is some sewer outside of them, but it is paid for by whoever is hooked on to that.
And are they the same utility districts that provide water?
No, no.
No, they're different, okay.
The municipalities, Jefferson City, let's take them, Jefferson City provides sewer for their, within their boundaries.
Boundary, and they do not extend outside of the boundary.
Unless somebody wants, if there is an entity that is outside Jefferson City, in fact, there's two entities. One is the hospital, another is, is another entity, both of them are outside Jefferson City's boundaries, but they paid to come on there, and it was, it's, both of those entities are extremely beneficial to the county. Beneficial to a broad population, so they allowed them to come on and pay for the extensions and all that, but it's a single-pipe deal.
Yeah, so it's probably tight, it doesn't have any capacity in it.
You know, it's just for, for those. But Dandridge is the same way, they're, they're within the municipality boundaries, all of that, so there is no county sewer. So we're, we're locked into low-density, we're locked into either, and some of the, the developments, Miss Sales, you might want to speak to this, like the cabin thing over there, they put in their own sewer plant.
R-two.
R-two, those things like that.
Is it a step system?
It's a centralized drip system.
Yes.
They got their own.
Yeah.
So, so there's a few of those around.
And they are becoming very popular.
In developments. But other than that, you've, you're septic systems. Out there for residential, and so, if you're looking for stuff in the county, now, with that said, coming up to the bottom end of the county, and it's odd how all this fits together, I don't know who figured it out. But KUB serves Strawberry Plains, they got a substation right, right across from us school. They also, KUB sewer line is up there. So, you know, there's possibilities for extension of businesses going down that corridor if KUB was allowed to come up and run sewer. And so all, there's a lot of moving parts there that would be, but right now, there's nothing in that thing from Jefferson City down to KUB. And oddly enough, KUB comes up three miles? It comes to, it comes to Esslinger Road, right? Esslinger Road, which is probably three miles up from the county line, something like that. But then you've got a gap from there to Jefferson City, there is no sewer along that.
There's no sewer. But, so, of the business you have now, where are they and what were their needs? And I assume that it's all pretty small, like Dollar General's?
That's right, yeah. They're amazing.
What about grocery stores?
All in the cities.
They're all in the cities. So what economically do you have that?
Not much.
Not much.
Yeah.
That would be my worst. You run a lot of them out of here.
Well, I don't think you run them off, it's just not a, it's just not a situation where they have, that you could meet their, their needs. You know, and especially most businesses that are in expansion mode right now, it's like your mom and pops, you know, it's not, it's not your corner store or anything like that, they're pretty well corporate entities. And, and they've got a formula or business model that they have to meet to locate in a place. Now, Dollar General's business model is to have a store every five miles.
And on every major artery getting into Walmart.
We got it. We got it.
Not about, but, but.
It's not a bad plan.
Look at that, look at the, what they have brought to these rural areas, I mean, you may not like the way they look, et cetera, et cetera, and they, they just have bad taste sometimes. But it still is bringing a service that your community very much needs, and it does generate sales tax dollars for you. So, and, you know, good planning is a balance to something for everyone. You know, you, you've got a commercial zone district for a reason, you want commercial development, those have to work for you. That doesn't mean that if you have good commercial development, that you, it's not anticipated that, or expected, that you're going to provide, continue to provide privacy and some level of protection for adjacent neighborhoods, for adjacent homes. They, they, the owners expect that of their local governments, and certainly there are tools to do that. If, and you tend to get the really large-scale things like agricultural businesses, or places that need a large amount of land that's fairly reasonable in price. And I think if you've got businesses or industries that want that, it's just like the situation with the hospital, they'll pay to bring a sewer line to themselves. They'll pay, that line is going to be tight, they're only going to put in what they need. Utility districts on the, can increase the line size of that sewer to increase the capacity to give you opportunities. Or you can negotiate with the utility district that the county will pay for the additional capacity in the line. Let's say they put in a six-inch water line, and you, you, you know that, you know, if you had a twelve-inch line, you've got fire flow at that point, there's a lot of businesses that need and expect to have fire flow. If they're putting a eight-inch sewer line, you can, once you get that trench open and somebody's paying for eight inches, it's almost a negligible amount to pay for an additional eight inches. To bring that line up to sixteen, so you have that opportunity preserved. But you, you have to look, you know, you have to decide where you want to do that and, and get in on when utility districts are making moves, so that you can piggyback with them. And it requires dialogue, you know, we really want to do this, give us your plans for expansion of your services, tell us where they are, let's map them, and let's joint venture on opening property up for commercial development. Once you designate that, then the residential developers can likewise say, well, we don't want to sell our houses next to that, that's no longer a fit place for a subdivision or individual houses. So there, there's a lot to be said for, you know, again, I'm, I'm a big proponent of, first thing you do is sit down and figure out where utilities are, map them all, get them on one piece of paper, and it will, it, it will tell you certain things. It will tell you where, and overlay that with some topographic relief, and, and you really, it, it will give you the answers for where things should, and therefore will likely be accommodated. You know, it's, it's not rocket science, it's not fast, but it's, it's certainly, when you're looking at your long-range land use plan, that is something that you start with. Some of these other things in terms of encouraging businesses to locate or providing limitations in your zoning ordinance, it, it's easy to, when you're, when you're starting on a program like this, to add a couple of sentences in the conditions for BZA approval, they're not, if it's not allowable use, that your, one of the conditions is going to be, you have to be on a state route, or you have to, you have to have frontage on a state route, or you have to have immediate access to a state route. Two things, one, you don't want them on your county roads, because if you have a strong enough business, they're going to have heavy equipment, either during construction, they're going to be serviced by semis. I'm just assuming that your county roads were not built to those specifications, and so, if you allow them.
Some of them in the last few years have, because we have entered in from the road department, by the regulations, by the commission, we do not accept the roads unless they're built.
To your standards. To your standards.
To the specs that we have from our road department.
You should, you actually shouldn't allow anyone to construct a road that doesn't meet your minimum standards.
And so, so everything that Mr. Charlie.
You don't.
Has done for years, probably the last, I know 15 years or longer, maybe 20.
25.
25. Everything has to be.
Built to county standards.
Built to that before we accept it, I mean.
Right. But, if you're allowing, if you know where your industrial property is going to be, so your base for a residential road is probably six inches of base. Two inch binder, inch and a half top coat. And I'm just.
I'll read that fast, Mr. Charlie, I, I don't know.
It should be in your subbracks. For industrial road, it's in the subdivision rate. For your, for an industrial road, that's eight inches of base. It is a different road. So, if you're allowing heavy equipment on one of your roads, you're driving up your need for a bigger tax base because you're going to have to do more additional maintenance on that roadway. You're going to have to maintain it more frequently.
Well, see, the cap, we've not put in.
Well, I'm sure that you haven't. But if you are looking for industrial development and you're looking at where it's going, as those areas develop, you should go ahead and zone them. And you should have an industrial cross session, section in your subbracks.
I agree with that, yeah.
You know, Tennessee and this, this area is, and I, I went to a presentation last week on the rate of residential growth in this area, in the Knoxville area. You guys are in that designated area. It's amazing. I service Claiborne County. We have a 3,000 dwelling unit subdivision going in Claiborne County.
A 3,000?
3,000.
That way.
What's the location of it?
It's on North Lake. Three miles of shoreline within the development. Folks out of New Jersey. And they're doing their own sewer, their own water. They're doing a 1,200 slip, they're doing two marinas, one private, one public. That's Claiborne County, you got an interstate here. They don't have an interstate anywhere nearby. They only got two state routes that are going through the whole county. So, now, they do have the lake, but.
We got two lakes.
You got two lakes. Now, I will say.
We had to have them two lakes, we'd been so much better off.
No, but once again, those are assets, those are opportunities. So.
Well, you never saw the ground over at Dutchville, it's a fever dam.
Well, the piece of land that this guy is building on is extremely steep. But, they're, and they're, they don't have zoning. Claiborne County does not have zoning. So, we're having to, now, I.
So, are they coming off, and I'm just curious, they coming off 63 going down the valley? To get there to the thing, or how, how are they bringing them in?
It's, it's just now under consideration by their planning commission. So, in the first Tuesday in August, we're looking at their construction, road drainage plans for infrastructure construction.
I'm sorry, I got you sidetracked back to us.
No, I, I, I mean, that's a great example of, people have discovered Tennessee. We have good roads, we have a good tax base, we have a good workforce. All those things.
Ms. Marion right here, she writes all her friends, and she is the best person in Jefferson County. She writes all her friends, do not come, it is terrible down here. And I think she is a wonderful person, wonderful person for doing that. I just want you to know.
Well, you don't want to be a victim. You want to be, you want to drive your own bus. Don't wait till somebody walks in the door and says, I bought 850 acres and I'm going to do a 3,000 unit development on it. Be proactive. Be, look forward and see what's coming and, and manage it. Don't, don't be a victim of it.
We're seeing the residential growth. It's the commercial and industrial. It's not there.
Well.
And when it does, does rise its head, it gets smacked down.
It doesn't sound like the, the industrial needs or even the commercial needs of, you know, Walmart has to be, has to get X number of semis a day. It, it's, and it also, I don't even know if a Walmart can go on a septic field. Do you have a Walmart in the, in the county? So it's in the city.
No, it's in the city.
Yeah. To be honest, the, most of the commercial I see, once again, is Dollar General Tractor Supply.
And we've had those.
And you've had those. Now, what brings jobs to the community is industrial development. And I don't know Jefferson County enough to be really familiar with your topographic constraints. But it seems a lot flatter than Cock County or Claiborne County.
In places.
In places.
There, there's some hills, but there, and there's some challenges, there's some rocks. But, we've got places that are flatter. But, but one of the things that we have, and we, we approved it back several months ago, Gentle McCant has a wonderful business, machine shop, was in expansion mode. He was wanting to locate, had the property. Considerable large piece of property, wanted to do two acres. And it was, it was beside, it cornered on the county road in 11E. And, and to me, that's a, that's a great place. If you're going to have it, it's, you're right there.
Right.
Access off the four lane county road. So, so the problem we run into is, how do we recruit those type businesses? Clean business, environmentally sound, produces low volume traffic, but jobs, stuff like that. So, so how do we get those? How do we structure what we're doing to find those businesses, to bring them in?
Do you not have, does the county or the cities collectively not have the chambers of commerce or economic community development directors?
Got the Jefferson Alliance.
Jefferson Alliance, I don't think of the name.
Joe Gibson.
And so, it's, it's private, private public partnership. So there's some private individuals that donate to it. The county puts in $100,000.
Hey, boy, that's a lot.
There's also some money comes in from the cities.
And they probably get money from the state of Tennessee as well.
Yeah, and, and they have a full time recruiter.
Who is it?
Joe Gibson.
Joe Gibson. And he worked closely with the individual that had the machine shop. And, and he had nothing but good things to say.
But we had complaints about it.
We did, we had, we had opposition.
They don't, they don't want anything on letting me sit out. That's it.
You, you know, one thing, and I don't know what the ADT is on 11E. I know I take it sometimes, I'm originally from the tri-cities and I'll take 11E through Greenville.
A lot. Because I sit right there on 11E. And to pull out on there, it takes a while. At some point during the day, I was in, I was in West Tennessee down there at Martin, a friend of mine, his daughter got married and I left Martin, or Sharon, which where they live, five miles back in Martin. And they were going to Union City for the reception because the church didn't have a fellowship hall. And from Martin to Union City, 22, Highway 22. Big wide highway like 11E, except it's got overpasses instead of the crossovers. It's built like an interstate. But from, in 14 miles, I met six cars. I passed two. I leave my driveway to the, and go up to the hospital. I passed 39 cars headed my, I met 39 cars. I mean, it's, it's, it's crazy lately. In the last two years, the, the, the traffic count there.
I mean, we, and we could pull up ADTs.
Brian Moser from where he's at down there at the.
I'll come back roads to work and have to sit.
I mean, that's, that's commercial industrial traffic. If you've got a road that's carrying, you know, 20,000 cars a day.
The, the intersection there at Wiggles and 11E is, is a fast approaching 40,000.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's a roadway that no one should want to live in or have a driveway, a residential driveway on. You may have a.
And that's what I'm talking about. That corridor down through there, the, the end game of that thing, whether it's in my lifetime or not, the end game is it ends up commercial industrial.
Well, and, and another thing is, is there, there's a term planners use called a commercial node. So, once you look at your utilities and some topographic relief, look at where your may, your, your, your state routes and those arterials, collectors, connectors that you got to cross, you got a, you got an intersection.
You've got two major intersections on 11E that cross it. One is 92, and that's at Jefferson City, it's four lane. The other one is 139. Both of them had red lights, both of them had huge amount of traffic's coming in. But you've got, the county, the way it works out, you've got 11E and 2570. And in the middle of those two, you've got the interstate. You've got three major routes that run up this county.
Do you have the password to that Wi-Fi in here?
Dumfins Valley is loaded up, we're, we're loaded on a.
Going four lane Dumfins Valley.
Yeah, it, it would not surprise me to see four, from, see, you're coming, Dumfins Valley comes from 407, straight up, parallel to the interstate. And all that development down there where the Indians bought, Buc-E's, all of that. I mean, it's coming right up through here.
Yeah, it's going to come here whether, whether you plan for it or not.
So that's what I'm saying, I mean, how do we capture that? How do we?
Once again, I mean, there's, you know, first steps and then there's the long, the long game. And the long game is, is looking at existing land use, plan for future land use and work with your community, your ECD folks, to get some utilities to them and then capitalize on it. But it should be done in commercial or industrial nodes so that you can take advantage of depth and not just frontage. I mean, one of the things I hate to see is a, a state route that there's just one business after another. They each have a curb cut, you can't get from one to the other. There's no depth of development, there's no open, there's no, everything just happens along the state route. Have a district so that car, you're concentrating your noise, your land use, your offsite impacts. And then you know, when residential developers come in, they know not to locate near that. That you've got to have open land for it. And, once again, it's starting to look at a land use plan.
So that goes back to the overlays?
I wouldn't call it overlays. The, I, I don't think you, you're looking at wholesale rezoning of your county property.
It would never pass.
I'm not advocating rezoning, absolutely not. What I'm saying is if we, if you put the overlays down those major corridors, you say, this is where we want you to be.
So what's the, what's the, what's the zoning designation on them now? Sounds like everything's A1.
A1.
A1 spots of other things.
It just depends on what it is, they're all spots. But, but we've never sat down and said, this is where we want businesses to locate in the county.
It's a logical place for them to locate.
Yeah. Why would you, I mean, I would assume that your county commissioners would want to see economic development, to have ample revenue. So, you're telling me that politically, that that's not a, a goal of theirs is to diversify, bring jobs and.
It don't seem to be.
When the opportunity's been there, it's not come true.
Right. Well, and.
We're lucky to have a dollar store in Strawberry. We're lucky to get that. Now, it's okay to have a 365 day a year yard sale.
Yeah.
On 11E.
But they're paying nothing on.
Where they sell anything from firewood to.
Chickens.
But other than that, we, we can't do that. We wouldn't be rural.
Well, part of establishing areas for commercial development will preserve your rural areas.
You think.
Because, I mean, you've already got state routes going through it. You already got 40,000 cars a day on it. If, if that, typically, that would be where businesses want to locate. And, and so, once again, it's commercial nodes. And that affords protection for everything else to remain farmland, to be protected farmland for residential structures and residential subdivisions to be located in those areas without fear of the parcel next door becoming a trucking center.
I'd like to recognize Oscar, if you could please, he's got something he's going to ask for more.
So, to me, the most immediate problem is our zoning regulations. Everything that's been talked about, I think we need to examine our zoning regulations and go through zone by zone and see what we can do. We've already heard from some people tonight regarding the, you know, campground and, and buffer zone. I think we need to review all of that. I think the biggest hindrance to economic growth right now is people are uncomfortable with our lax zoning. So, the issue with the machine shop was, you had to take a piece of property from A1 to I1. Well, once you go into I1, that, there's so many different things that can be used on a heavy use zone like I1. So, to me, the most immediate thing we can do is review our zoning regulations and see if we can shore those up. Then we can start to branch out from that. But we're trying to run a marathon and I think we just need to take a little walk.
It's a big elephant, you do have to bite it one.
One bite at a time.
Yeah, it really is. It takes, to do a really good zoning, uh, planning program with zoning and so, it takes a while.
Yeah.
It really does. There's, there's too many moving parts to it. And it's also legally, you always want to be on sound basis. I, I think that's one thing that is concerning to me because to be on legal sound basis, consistency is everything. And the, the, the allowance of uses through the BZA that aren't allowable uses without developmental criteria, that's a, that would be a real concern to me. That would be a real concern to me. Once again, though, those fixes are pretty easy. Now, they do have to go from this body to your legislative body. And only your county commission can adopt changes. So.
Can this body, we can change our zoning regulations in here, can't we?
No.
That has to go to the commission?
I guess the region. We can make a recommendation.
I'm sorry, what is that?
We can make a recommendation.
A recommendation.
Yeah. We can't.
It's required to have a recommendation from this body.
Okay.
But county commission, it's a political issue, so only county commission can vote on it. They're required to hold a public hearing on it. But, you know, if, if, if the residents don't feel like you're protecting their property, they're going to be against things that you do.
I think that's where we're at right now.
So you're building in your own opposition by not having a clear cut program or clear cut, I call them performance criteria, of, you know, there, businesses are nuisances to residences.
They are, but if we look at what Austin's talking about, and look at the zoning regs, and then we look at those nodes, we're going to face that opposition when we start to set those up. When we look at that area, that opposition's going to be there in those areas.
Don't you think it would lessen though, if we, if we tightened up our zoning regulations?
That's a crystal ball. I, I don't know if it would or not. You would hope so, but I couldn't say that it would.
I think maybe we're making, we're taking. I think maybe we're making, we're taking steps out of order. We're trying to go, we're trying to skip a step here. That's how I see it.
And what it makes it so hard is when you already have like businesses located in those areas where people have asked to be resolved.
It's hard to say, yeah.
Exactly, and that's, that's years past.
Yeah.
It's already been developed and already been set up, and it's hard for us to come in ten years down the road and say, well, this person was allowed because of this.
Well, to John Neal's point, for twenty-six years, we've kind of piecemealed this thing together.
Right, and that's who we are.
Yeah.
Trying to get a fix for it and-
That's why I think if we clean up our zoning regulations and then start to move forward, I think that needs to be the first step. I think, uh, that would reduce, are you gonna have opposition? I think there's, I think you're always gonna have opposition, no matter what, when you start talking about zoning. But, when you can protect peoples, when people feel they're being protected, their property's their investment. Most people, their property, that's their biggest investment. It definitely is after those reassessments.
Absolutely.
So, um, I would like, if, uh, if our planner would review it and maybe start coming up with recommendations, even if we just took it one zone at a time.
I mean, that, that's how I would recommend doing it, is take it one zone at a time. Um, so, and I, and I think maybe you can get two balls with one rock. Uh, no, is that?
Two birds, two birds on stone.
Um, in that, um, if you take a, a zone district and you massage it to the point you're comfortable with it, and it looks good, and you've got, uh, uh, you've got some performance criteria in there, and you've got some clarity.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the process is a little more, uh, transparent, I suppose. Um, then you can also take a look at that map and say, okay, this is, uh, uh, C-one, like a low-density, um, commercial area. Where should this be going? Um, and, and once you're intimately familiar with a particular zone district, um, I've been trying to refer zoning ordinance. Um, you know, and, and it may also be that you might want to adopt new zone districts, depending on, um, what I can hear, districts. Um-
Yeah, absolutely.
That you don't have an adequate number, like you've got a I-one and an I-two, uh, industrial district? That's, that, I think that that's good. Uh, you've got a neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and then you've got agricultural, and then a whole, several, three residential in addition to agricultural and forestry. Um, and, and it seems like there, there's an overabundance of A-one. Um, and if it's going to be agricultural, um, if you concentrate your commercial, once again, that provides grounds to really protect those other zone districts. Um, and businesses tend to locate together.
Would that, do you think that would make businesses more comfortable if they understood exactly what they were getting into?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, you know, um, businesses want a sure thing.
Because it's an investment.
It's an investment. It's a big investment. Not only that, but they're dealing with banks that are typically in very urbanized areas. And, um, they don't, they don't even look at a Jeff County and say, well, that's a great place.
Yeah.
They, they've got their business performer that have to be met. You either meet it or you don't. You're in or out. And, um, they, they don't really fudge on that. Um-
Say that again.
Um-
Please, if you don't mind.
Yeah, if you've got businesses that, well, I know that, um, uh, there was a business proposing to locate in, in Cock County, and you made that big of an investment, and I'll give you this, uh, Home Depot, um, Lowe's, several of those businesses, uh, Clayburn County has tried, tried to attract those businesses to Clayburn County. And, um, they have repeatedly told them, you have no zoning. You afford us no protection. We would not consider locating in your county. Now, you're sitting on an interstate, and they don't have an interstate. I was, I was, you know, I was impressed that they went and asked in the first place. But, um, businesses, you're, I mean, you know, a Home Depot, you're looking at a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot building. Um, look at the construction costs, look at the investment. To be honest, they probably can locate on a septic line because the only things that they use are, uh, they use water, but it's just employees going to the bathroom. Uh, you're not doing laundry, you're not doing this, you're not doing that, they're not washing cars, you know, the typical things of businesses. So, um, I was surprised you don't have more trucking and warehousing. Um, they're notorious for not needing a lot of infrastructure.
Sign was too high, two foot.
The, um, the, um, now-
But is a Home Depot, if we go back and look at our survey, is that what we're wanting to attract? Does that go along with what they, the, the citizens of the county have spoken, said that they wanted to keep?
I'm a Lowe's guy.
Yeah.
Well, I've never seen a Home Depot or a Lowe's not inside the city.
Exactly.
I don't think they locate in county.
And they want to preserve agriculture, according to the survey.
And I've never seen-
And to keep the rural field.
And I'm, I'm using those as examples. I know tractor supplies are, uh-
We have one of those in the city, and we have the Farmers Cooperative in the county.
And they may be, you know, one thing about water, you may have water, but-
It's in the city.
That's San Antonio.
Yeah.
And the high school.
Yep.
Even if you have water, you may not have fire flow protection.
Absolutely.
Those are two different things.
And that's one of the things, we were talking about neighboring utilities earlier. If we're looking at piggybacking something that's against us, we're getting the end of their infrastructure. You know, we're getting the smaller stuff that they got because they don't, they don't need that large stuff on the tail end. So it's hard for us to tie sixteen inch sewer line onto eighty inch line.
You can't.
Exactly.
You know, T-Dat won't even let you do that.
So, that's, those are still obstacles that you'll meet when you start making some things.
You can't put a fire hydrant on the line less than eight inch, six inches. But if it ties to a four inch line, you still can't put a fire-
So you, you've got to look at what you've got coming to those areas as well.
Right, which, once again, means starting out looking at utilities. So, I think, well, I, I would suggest maybe doing a, a two-phased approach of starting to go down and look at the details, the performance criteria of each of your zone districts. Um, as we become familiar with a zone district and what, you know, zone districts, I, I look at it probably a little differently than you do look at it. Um, most people look at these things and consider it a regulation. Um, I look at it and think that you're describing goals and objectives. And, um, once you, once you get accustomed to what the goal and objective is of your A-one zone, then you can consider where you're supposed to go. Um, and at the same time, maybe we could be, uh, requesting, especially from Joe Gibson, um, information on your utilities to, to set up a database so we can look at that and, um, kind of, uh, hopefully reach a point where the two considerations will, will have, meet at a crossroads.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now, um-
So, let me ask you a question based on what you just said. You start down through the regulations on the zoning thing. Where is the other zones that you, you're, if you're gonna tighten them up, if you're gonna put performance standards in, you're probably gonna change all these. So, at the same time, we need to be looking at other zones like an A-two, A-three, A-five, whatever, an I-five or what, as we go down through there. If you, if you remove something, by law, you can't zone out a legal business.
That, it's a, it's protected by the State of Tennessee.
Protected. So you've got to have someplace to put that. So if you change that regulation as to do that, what's your thoughts on where we put the things that we change out of that zone?
Um, well, they're all legal nonconformities. If you had, like in an agricultural zone and you don't allow, uh, commercial uses anymore, or restaurants or whatever, uh, anything that exists prior to changing that zone district is protected.
I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about going forward. If you take out, let's just take for, on A-one, let's say we don't allow grocery stores in A-one anymore. How do you put them and how do you make room for them because you need the Dollar Generals, or then are commonly as known as the New Market Mall down there? You, you need the Dollar, the need of the Dollar Generals in Strawberry Plains, you need the, so, how do we balance that when, if you take those commercial uses out of A-one?
And it may not be taking them out. It may be stating that, um, i- if it's a, if it's a consideration by your BZA, then your BZA is charged with determining the conditions of, uh, location. Let's say it's a Dollar General, and you want it to be on a state route. You want it to, um, um, you know, any, any number of things that kind of chip away at the opposition. Uh, and I'll give you a, a great examples that I use, uh, to kind of explain what I'm talking about. Um, the State of Tennessee allows daycares in houses as long as you keep, uh, below a certain number of kids. Um, and in most zoning ordinances, that is a conditional use. Um, what are the conditions of that use? Now, you guys just say it goes to BZA, um, and, uh, you vote, and it's, it's, I look at that as being very subjective. What I have done in the past is say, okay, you're gonna put a daycare in this house. Um, you have to have a, a curval in your driveway. You can't back up. You have to have twice the, um, minimum lot size. If it's forty thousand square feet, you have to have eighty thousand square feet. Uh, you have to have a permit from the State of Tennessee. You have to have, uh, a buffer in the backyard to protect the neighbors from all the kids running around. You have to do this, this, this. So if somebody comes in and says, I wanna put a daycare in here, what they do is you've got your conditions, uh, one of them being a permit from the State of Tennessee. So your job is to go, where's your curval in your driveway? You can't back up. Uh, where's, uh, if you're on a septic system-
So you're putting performance standards in?
And they're called performance standards. And your job is not to just say, well, I like it. Your job is collectively to determine, can you meet these five things? And once you say you've met the five things, you approve it. It's not a subjective thing. It's very quantitative and qualitative.
So is that the planning commission or is that BZA? Cause if the BZ, the BZA, the BZA makes the determination if it's a light kind use.
Right.
So if the daycare's permitted in whatever zone, if it's permitted in R-one, then does that go to the planning commission? That goes to BZA?
Goes to BZA.
For the performance standards?
For determining compliance with the performance standards.
Okay.
Can planning commission set the performance standards?
Yes.
BZA has to pull them?
Yes.
Okay, based on the performance standards, how do we, guy buys, uh, let's, let's say the machine shop that we were talking about earlier. Uh, he locates on an eighty acre track in the middle. You've got ex, you've got certain performance standards. Do you make those performance standards at a minimum for that in the middle of an eighty acre track? Or do you-
You can't pick and choose.
Okay, and so the performance standards that he would have, let's say if there's a subdivision across the road. So the performance standards he has for the subdivision across the road has to be the same one that's in the middle of the eighty acres?
Unless you rock, can, I mean, the-
How, how do you have enough?
So words have meaning. So let's say that, um, if you're locating within a certain distance of an established subdivision, then here's your criteria. If your, the nearest house is not, or if you're, what you could do is, um, uh, establish thresholds for compliance based on acreage. If you were locating on attractive land and you're doing a commercial effort and you have five acres, then here's your criteria. If you're, uh, doing the same business and you're on fifty acres, then this is the criteria. And you would establish thresholds for compliance.
So you do it to, for the business type, or you do it for, for the acreage for any business going in there?
It, it would depend on, like, you've got allowable uses, and then you have any use that's not specifically allowed can be determined by the BZA. So you have these things. You just have no guidelines for decision-making.
Okay.
Does that go back to our regulations?
Yeah.
So, so where do we set the standard at?
It would be in the-
What I'm asking.
It would be in the individual-
Where, where are the-
You guys are on the same page.
The, the standard that you're-
Well, hold on now, John Neal. We're getting somewhere here. We're on the same page now. And it took us a long time to get here. Many books.
Yeah, but all mine are coloring books.
Coloring books.
So, so where do we sit the standard that gives us the flexibility? How do we build that in the regulation that allows us to have the commercial, the Dollar General, or the machine shop or whatever, located right there, across the road from the subdivision? How do we have enough performance standards for that to happen? And s- and not get hamstrung out here by saying we've got these as a minimum? How do we, how do we have the additional-
Well, in other zone districts, in some zone districts, I mean, you've got an I and D one and two zone district. So obviously, industrial uses are allowed there. If you're going to allow an industrial use in agricultural zone like the, uh, trucking company that was here last week, one, or last month, one of the, one of the difficulties I had with it was if you had approved it, uh, we've got three trucks, all right? You've got three trucks. What are you gonna do when some guy comes in and he's got a hundred and fifty? You don't define it, and you don't have thresholds for it. So, um, how do you make a distinction between, between those two that's legally defensible?
Okay, so define legally defensible. On this, I mean, is it, is it five acres? Uh, you can have up to three trucks in five acres. Uh, twenty-five trucks takes fifty acres. I mean, is that the kind of stuff we put in?
Words have meaning. I've got a good friend that's a, a land use attorney in Nashville. He's actually a consultant for CTAS, um, which is the County Technical Advisory Service. And he'll ask, Catherine, words have meaning, right? Make sure you write it down and codify it. Uh, uh, and I think that that illustrates to businesses and prospective folks who are searching for land. If you could pick up an ordinance and it has a high degree of clarity to it, and you know what it's asking you to do, that's what developers want. Uh, when it says, well, the planning commission can do this, and the planning commission can do that, and there's no guidelines, I'd run like hell. Cause that means it's a vote of these people, and on this day, you'll vote this way, and on that day, you'll vote somewhere else. Uh, they have no assurance or protection. And they got, they got banks, they got shareholders, they've got, um, um, their job is, is really hard, but they are, um, you know, at some point, there will be somebody extensor in this area. Uh, the land's too valuable, you're too close to Knoxville, um, you've got all these state routes moving through here. I'm su- you've got two lakes. I'm sure you've got rail access. Um, yeah, they're coming.
They've got, uh, yeah, see, we've got the, we've got the only double track between here and Bristol.
Wow.
I mean, it's, it, there, there's some going through town.
So it's side by side?
There, there's some going through town, but, but we've got one of the few double tracks from Jefferson City-
So you don't have a county industrial park? There's not a county industrial park here?
No, but we've got a prime location for one, but-
I mean, if you've got double rail, then you could do a rail siding.
There's 244 acres beside that double rail siding in New Market.
I mean, that, y'all have great opportunities.
There's a real yard coming. They condemned homes and bought property.
It's, it's sitting down, or sitting vacant right now.
And that's in the New Market Strawberry Plains area, isn't it? Yeah.
See, that, if, if there was, if there's any space for an industrial park in the county, and I hate to say it because I live in New Market, but if there's any space for the, that it needs to be, it's there, but there's one landowner, there's no widows, there's no orphans to kick off, there's nothing. I mean, it's sitting there as a bare piece of property beside a double rail line.
I can't believe no one's offered money for it yet.
Norfolk Southern's the one that owns it.
They own it.
244 acres.
They went in and took the.
They went in and.
Bought the property, and then the houses torn back.
And that's another thing about businesses, they always play the long game.
Jumping in.
And they will buy property and wait.
I'm going to recognize Austin again. He, he, your question will be asked.
Well, we're on this discussion. John Neal and I are on the same page. Chigger agreed to some of the stuff I said.
Is that, is that earth shattering right there?
You did earlier.
He went and got his Austin.
You've got an Austin?
Well, John, what do you think if we have her, I mean, I guess you probably need some time to familiarize yourself with our current regs, and then if we went zone by zone, and you could just pick a zone and come back and make recommendations? Because some of the questions that have been asked, I think would be impossible for her to answer at this point, you know?
But at the end of the day, you guys need to own this. So I, I have to be in Newport at 3:00 on, same day. They didn't meet today. Is there a group of people that would meet with me once a month, like over mid, midday?
It's hard for me midday because of work.
But if you, and, and as Austin's saying, if you would just review and say, okay, here's where we need to put performance standards, or here's where you're lacking in that, and come back to us.
Just a little at a time.
Fourth, fourth Tuesday every month, with except in December.
And I think Pop would love to discuss that with you.
I'm retiring.
And be, no, it's not.
But every, every meeting, you come back, we'll get the maps that you want. That's never been requested before. We were working on these, these overlay maps to see what, what our zones actually are versus what the actual use of them is. That's what those maps are. But if we can get those utility maps.
Pop could probably have them for you tomorrow.
I think the planning, I think I, I think Jordan. We can email them to you. There's a big copies of them right there.
The land use maps?
Well, no, this is the. It's only current.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah. I probably have a digital copy of it. I can't get on the internet right now.
Yeah, you can't, Jordan gets you.
I've already gotten all the files from the developer district.
You probably got it.
Do we need to put this in a motion, or is that just agreeable?
I think that can be agreeable. I mean, if nobody has an objection to it, that's.
Just as a next step?
Yeah. I think get her the maps and let her take a look at those. Because it's an ongoing process.
Yeah. She picks up several things in a zone and says, hey, here's some deficiencies. And brings back to us every meeting.
I don't think it'll be all that hard to find them either.
Oh, there's plenty. There's plenty of sand in this whole deal, but there's, but like I say.
And there's some good folk getting overlooked in this whole bill, too. And it's, there's two sides to that coin.
Well, I don't know that it's working for either side right now.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, there's a lot of hindrances there that needs to be fixed as well. And I, I know we're just talking, this is kind of open forum right now amongst us, and I may be out of place in saying it, but what we looked at earlier tonight on that lean trail, you know, variances have been given from what we heard Tim share with us, and that's went on quite a bit. And we've allowed some, not allowed others. We had pictures brought before us tonight, and then we had Mr. Garrett's deed come in, and the pictures and the deed did not line up, especially where it showed the tract of property and where it was already, you know, encroaching on the right of way. It's just, it's tough when you allow some and don't allow the other in one certain area. And again, too, with his carport, it was not going to be a permanent structure. Those have a bolt stuck in the ground. It can be pulled and moved at any given time with that. So there's, there's a lot of things there I think we can improve on, and we should improve on.
I'll say this, that's the first variance I've ever remembered being turned down.
Yeah, and you can look at the pictures, you can drive that road and see he's, he's not out of line, especially if the man was given permission to put something back to where he had an existing building. And we put a time limit on that, if he's still the same owner of the property?
That's what I was.
Yeah, where's, where's that in, in the regs? Then where does, he was given permission to do it, but that's expired?
It's four feet.
I'm just asking.
You know, it's four feet, what's the difference between four and a half feet and four feet? Six inch, you're going to, you know? If you're going to have rules and regulations, you gotta, sometimes you gotta stick with them.
I know I got in weeds with that, but I just, I need to bring it up. Do we have any other discussion in that? If not, I'd be.
Are we on other business?
I don't even know if other business is on the agenda, is it?
It is on the agenda.
Okay. Is there any other business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Austin.
We heard some, I think there's still, those of you hanging out still, thank you, talking about the campground by their residence. What do we have as far as a campground and buffer zones? Is there something required there?
He showed it on the site plan you all approved, but I'll go up and meet with him. I'll call him tomorrow and meet with him and see. I don't know. Do we have any recall of making, build a fence, but he showed trees on his site plan?
If he showed trees on his site plan and he didn't put them in, that's a violation of your zoning ordinance. And you can cite him for that.
Sounds like you need to build a fence, but I don't know if we can make it.
Well, and, and some of your, you know, a lot of, a lot of, a good planning program also has an administrative element of you have criteria, you look at a site plan and the criteria is met, you want to make sure that that is, makes it on the ground.
So it's met and then maintained.
And maintained, so.
So enforcement, enforcement of it.
You may need to have some language like, do you have occupancy permit? Do you have, do you issue building permits?
Yeah, just, I don't know, but he built a bathhouse, maybe that he had to get a permit for.
So if you, anywhere you have site plan requirements, you should have issuance of a building permit and then issuance of an occupancy permit. And that may be something, I mean, that should go with the zoning ordinance. So prior to utilization or operation, they have to come back and get an occupancy permit.
From who?
Or the building.
Zoning or building.
It's, would be building. Well, you, you do it concurrently. You do it together because you.
I don't think I have power to.
That got stricken. That got stricken.
I just asked, we have money in the budget for zoning enforcement or code enforcement?
Yeah, they got.
Yeah, it got cut out.
But if you, why have a site plan requirement if you have no mechanism to mandate compliance?
That's a good question.
And that's, those are the things that we need you to write.
Oh, I can do that all day long.
And, and go through here and, and see where those deficiencies are.
You know, one thing I was, I know you're doing roadways. Do you hold, now this is in your, keep in mind, these are two different sections of Tennessee code annotated. So when you approve road drainage plan for construction of roadway, right, I understand that, but when that plat is filed that creates right of way and you've got improvements in that right of way, do you hold a surety bond for it?
Yes.
Okay, and that's approved by the planning commission. Where are they?
We don't have any right now.
We don't have any. We release the bond once the road is accepted.
And have you ever let one expire?
Unfortunately, we, we had a little issue a long time ago, but we learned a lot from that.
Who, who administers your surety bonds?
Who what?
Who administers?
I have them in the office.
The finance department and the zoning office.
Charlie, yeah, Charlie tipped.
Okay, the, by state law, this body is the only one that can set a bond. This is the only body that can call a bond.
And we, we do, but what it goes, see, we operate under Act 81, so it has to be signed off with on the finance director.
Okay, and that's because?
We operate under the Act 81.
What does that mean?
Well, there, there's the Act of 57, there's the Act 81, there's home rule, there's, there's about four things in the state that you can be as a county municipality. We happen to be under the Act 81, and there's certain regulations. It not only requires Mr. Seals, but it also requires the finance director to be involved in that.
In an, an surety bond?
Like when they sign off to release them. This body releases them.
And are they, are they letters of credit, or are they?
Letters of credit mostly, yeah.
Letters of credit.
Most of the time, the developers will put it in and have it done before the final.
Okay.
And they don't have to put a bond.
Right.
Back and back.
But that's, that's some of the.
To other business. Did Tim's answer satisfy your question?
Yeah, so if Tim could, could look into that matter and get back to us next month?
What is it? The campground.
Yeah, I love her zone.
I'm calling tomorrow.
Okay.
So it satisfies you.
Yeah.
Is there any other business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn this meeting.
We have a motion. Second, all of the favor please stand.